I'm an agency.
All right, ladies and gentlemen.
Before we begin city council meeting tonight, we will first enter into a public hearing. It's January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. We are here to receive public comment on the Axley Way annexation consisting of twenty point six four nine acres at approximately nine hundred south, five hundred east. Anybody that would like to make a public comment considering this issue? If you'd please come forward, state your name for the record and keep your comments brief if possible.
Thank you. My name is Ross Ford. I'm an owner of one of the pieces of property involved in that annexation. Just real quick, several years ago, we went through the process of going to annex this property, got everything to the point that it was ready to go except for the purchase of the water to bring it in. And just looking at it, the value to bring it in wasn't worth the cost of the water, so we chose to pull back and leave it in the county. So our concerns with it right now is that its current use doesn't need to be in the city. We don't see any particular value to bring it into the city. We would prefer to leave it in the county. And we don't want to be stuck with additional costs if the city chooses to bring it in.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Ford?
Yeah.
Could you make sure that our recorder gets personal information? And maybe she already has it?
Yes, and I've provided something in writing as well.
Absolutely. So what we would like to, what I'd like to is just have you meet with staff and let's gain a good understanding. This is just a public comment and then we will, it has a process to do for the annexation and we want to make sure we understand you in a better way and just vet it out. And maybe show you some alternatives, not to tuck in or out of anything, but just to, so that we have a better understanding.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to make public comment considering the Axley Way annexation? Seeing none, we'll move on to the second item of a public comment, and that is to receive public comment on the American Fork South Stake Annexation consisting of four point three zero seven acres at approximately six forty south and one hundred west. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion of our meeting and we will move on to the American Fork City Council Regular Session. Again, I would welcome you tonight, this January fourteenth in the year two thousand and twenty, to the American Fork City Council Regular Session. Agenda is on the table. It's been posted on state and city website and in various places throughout the city. And we will follow that agenda as outlined. We will first begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and it will be followed by an invocation by Councilmember Chris Jansen, after which I will conduct the roll call. If everybody please stand. Our dear Father in heaven, we are so thankful for the opportunity that we have together together.
We're grateful for this great country in which we live, for the freedom that we enjoy, the opportunity to manifest our destiny, to choose the things that we would like for ourselves and our descendants, the future inhabitants of our great community. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve. We're thankful for the wonderful residents that we have and the great spirit that there is in this community. We pray for their spirit to be with us this night, to touch us and to guide us, that we may be civil, that we may be open in our minds and our hearts, that we may keep the future and choose the things that are the best for the most people involved. We pray for their spirit to be with us and with our families while we're away. In the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Okay. I'll now conduct the roll call. Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Shelton?
Here.
Councilmember Chris Jansen?
Here.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the public comment period. Anybody in the audience that would like to? And it looks like we have at least two, and I will call you up. But anybody, I'm going to call these two individuals up. If anybody besides these two would like to make public comment, please follow them. We'd ask you to state your name for the public record and keep your comments brief. And I will call up Lisa, and is it Berkland? I'm sorry, Lisa, I'm having a hard time reading your writing. I don't know why.
Oh, sorry.
So if you'd just state your name, Lisa.
Okay. My name is Lisa Berkland. I have lived in American Fork for almost twenty years now, going on nineteen-plus years. Here today, first of all, to start with, thank you. Thank you for all of you serving. I absolutely loved your prayer. We do all that we do because we love our city and we want it to be good for our future. I currently serve as a member of the Park Tax Committee and have loved doing that for two-
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation Committee and have loved doing that. I also serve both at my high school and in other leagues throughout the city because I love recreation and I love our kids. The first reason I'm here today is because in one of our meetings, it came up that the new sodded area will be a parking lot during Steel Days and during the IHC Canyon Run. And that was a big concern to me. And sometimes when I hear things, I think, okay, maybe it's just me. I don't know. So I brought it up to the committee and I would say it was generally unanimous that it was a concern. Not that it couldn't happen, and if proper precautions were taken, that it couldn't happen. But I said, you know, we are fighting for parks, for park amenities. We chose as a city to sod a very large area of grass to be used for recreational purposes. That being said, it is the nicest piece of grass we have in all of AF now. For those of us that play recreational sports and play club sports, we travel out of our city constantly because we don't have a place to play here in our city. Hindley Park is great and our Parks Department is amazing. I know they try and care the best they can for our fields. But with that being said, when we add things like multiple thousand cars driving on new topsoil and on new sod in the summertime, I really worry that that will be jeopardized, that those fields. Talked with Parks Committee, talked with our whole committee, and I know there's precautions taken as far as sprinklers turning on and off. I know they try. Worst-case scenario, it rains or we have hundred-degree heat and we just run on that grass. So my question is just a proposal, and most importantly, I know our council members who come to our meetings, I think, have brought it to attention too. But if there's any way we could look into shuttling, went through, called a couple of the cities, one namely being Lehigh City, and the Lehigh Rodeo Grounds has no parking, if you've been there. And yet, the whole community finds a place to park and still come and enjoy without destroying any property. Granted, they don't have grass necessarily that their choice was to park on. I'm just saying, where there's a will, there's a way. And with Steel Days, we used to have it right down at Robinson, and I know it was small. I love it at Art Di, but I don't know that I would love a thousand-plus cars and more parking there. The other thing is, above and beyond the fields, damaging them, fields, we have an opportunity to actually rent those fields. For many of us who play club sports and, like I said, travel out of the city, there's multiple leagues who would love to rent those fields. I know recreation is not a general moneymaker, but I think there's an opportunity there for us to capitalize on if we protect that one entity that we have that now is great. Secondly, with that is traffic. I have been on a team that had a player lifelighted from Art Di because they could not get into Art Di. And some of us that play recreation down there know it's a nightmare getting in and out of Art Di. Citizens were blocked out of their homes on Steel Day nights coming in when traffic was leaving. Again, not that that's a problem. I think you plan for it. We love our city. We love things to happen. But as far as emergency vehicles, being able to come in and out with that many cars there, it's a real concern to me. And like I said, when you've seen a player get lifelighted, it's scary. And seeing the ambulances that couldn't get through. A lot has changed in Art Di in four years. Thank you for all of those improvements and two access routes. We really appreciate it. But just something to think about for that area. I would be happy to do any legwork as a citizen, as a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee to look into shuttling. I don't know. The high school is not that far away and I'd love to protect that land. Okay. Second, moving on. Thank you very much for listening to me. And if there's any other concerns, please let me know because, like I said, I sit on a committee that sometimes I feel like I don't do much on, so I'd love to help. Okay. Second, we have a whole south side of the city that has no parks. Art Di is awesome. It's a regional park that brings people, which is another reason why those soccer fields, please protect them. We have bathrooms there. We have great playgrounds. It's an amazing park. In sitting on that committee for two years, it has been very frustrating to me to hear developer after developer that comes in and isn't, I'm very innocently ignorant, so I really try and get all the information, but I don't think is being held to the line to provide recreational areas. I have something I would love to leave with you. This is a D.R. Horton community that my husband runs. In this community in Cold Spring Ranch, it's a thousand homes that are being built. The city of Lehigh required D.R. Horton to provide ample recreational space for that community. It is open to the public, but generally, it's just for that community. In that community, they have not only a pool, they have a basketball court, they have their own pickleball courts. They have something called a pump track, which is like a BMX momentum kind of area, really fun. They have what's called a terrapack. It's also another area for hammocks, but it's got benches, trees, tunnels, just fun places to play. In doing that, I will just tell you respectfully, in the building community, American Fork is not seen as being very accountable to builders. Things that they say they have to do is not happening. In all of our area down with Woodside, down with Ivory, the new Edge properties that are coming in by Front Runner, we are given wetlands that are undeveloped and we're not able to use for parks, at least to a great extent. Sitting on that committee, we also are advised that things cost a lot of money. And with that being said, to repass this park tax, we hope to have city councils support that south side. It's a lot of new homes. It's very affluent home building down there. And to pull people into American Fork, they want to have great recreational opportunities. We really appreciate, we've submitted some plans to help with paths to go at least down to Rotary where that south side can bike and get to a nice park. But we would love to see the city council and our part be advocates for developers specifically being held to requirements that provide usable parklands or putting in even for those that are there, even if it's an HOA requirement or what have you, that some of those opportunities will be made so that the south side can have a little bit more ample park use. Also, if there's any concerns that we can help with, with Park and Recreation Committee, please let us know. We would love, we have seven citizens on that group who love the city, who love the parks, who love kids, who want to be here. One of the things we talk about a lot, and I know I have to go, is we don't have any ADA parks in our city. And we would love for those families that deal with ADA children to be able to have some parks so we're not traveling out to Patriot Park in Saratoga or to Discovery Park in PG, that we get one right here. And if we can help in any way, we'd love to. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'm going to leave this with you.
Could you please? If you're leaving with me, I will make sure everybody in the council gets one.
Please ask if there's any questions. And your Park and Recreation Department is awesome. They come to those meetings. They explain things that I would never understand and really help us to want to do better for our community. So thanks.
Thanks, Lisa.
And AF's playing PG right now. I'm sorry to leave, but it's okay. Thank you.
All right. The next individual that has submitted a request is David. I can't tell if that's an O or an S.
Josie.
Josie. Okay.
It's my right.
Okay. It looks like it might be an E there, David. So we invite you to come forward.
So my name is David Josie. It's actually interesting because all the city councils and mayors know me all over, except for American Fork. For some reason, I live in American Fork. But the reason I'm here is because I happened to talk to a few people about fields and they said, well, I don't think the city council or the mayor know the needs and what gets, kind of happened in some of the youth sports in the community. So to introduce me, I'm the club president of North Utah County Soccer. People call it NUCS. I have been for almost twenty years. It was, I got stuck doing it and I've ended up being pretty good at it and I've been doing it for a long time. Just so you know, another interesting thing is we're the largest soccer, youth soccer league in the state and we're one of the top three biggest in the western United States. And we're actually based in American Fork. And the interesting thing about that is we compete against the city because they have a soccer program. We have a soccer program and the city had, so somebody, in fact, I think it was Lisa that called me the other day and said, hey, I don't think they realize that you could use fields. And I said, we can always use fields because we have, we use fifty-five fields a season. Some are small, some are big, but we use a total of fifty-five fields and we use them all over the place. We rent Hindley Park. We do the maintenance. We actually spent a couple thousand dollars fixing the field this last summer. We did a lot of the sod. We tried to fix what we've used. But we end up in situations where like Bamberger, we asked if we could rent that again this last fall and we were told that we couldn't because it was maybe going to be used for something else. It ended up not getting used for anything and we didn't get to rent it. I also happen to live across the street from Art Di, so I, first of all, want to say I appreciate, I think we've gotten emails from the, or letters from the mayor when there's been activities. And but when Lisa made the comment about residents not being able to go back in the neighborhood, I can't remember, I think it was Fourth of July or Steel Days where literally we had left to go to the grocery store and the police officers would not let us back in our own neighborhood because they were trying to get people out. So we had to wait over two hours before we could get back to our house that lives in. So there's a little bit that could be perfected in that process, but I appreciated that you were keeping people out of our neighborhood and putting barriers up. So also, also so you know, we are a 501(c)(3). I would, I guess the main thing I wanted you to know is that there is a big demand for fields. We would love to have fields, but like the way it works right now is a city soccer program, which is actually a lot smaller than ours. In fact, you guys have to have, combined with other cities, to have enough teams. And then we have, we can't use your fields because our soccer season goes at the same time as your soccer season. And one, one thing that's good about our program is we're not trying to make any money off it. We're just trying to provide soccer. And we're able to provide from a three-year-old all the way up to high school or higher where a city program is not focusing on the needs of the soccer. It's focused on other things. So I guess maybe what I'm saying is, if you can maybe think about the field situation, I would like to, at some point, talk about maybe making it so that we're not necessarily fighting together, but maybe we're working together a little bit better on providing the recreation services. Because we do charge, we charge just a few dollars, really more than the city does. And we're, we don't own the fields. We don't own the employees. We don't own anything. So I think that's it, just to let you guys know what we are and what's out there and that there is a need for fields.
Okay. David, I might suggest that in the coming weeks, that I might just have you come into my office and maybe bring our recreation director. And I don't want to leave this as the end, so let's have a discussion about your program and our programs and see where it goes.
And we don't conflict. Doug Snyder, who's, who helps with the recreation program, I think he's the assistant director. Him and I are great friends. He's actually coached in our program. So he does work really well with us. It's just that he's got his job and his thing to do and we've got our thing. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to make public comment at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the public comment period and we'll turn to the city administrator report.
Just keeping on the whole recreation theme here, we have several swim meets up at our recreation center, up at the fitness center this week, so it's gonna, it's pretty crazy. And we appreciate working with the school district on the different high schools that come and meet in those swim meets. Saturday, this last Saturday, we had the fitness fair at the fitness center. And that's where the public is invited to come and purchase their annual pass. It's discounted at that time. And we had a great turnout. We sold around eleven hundred passes this year, which is up from just over a thousand passes last year. And we had approximately two thousand one hundred and twenty-five and a half people come. I think there was someone pregnant. Just kidding. Come and visit, walk through the fitness center by a pass, participate in some classes. There were over forty vendors who came to help people. They could take their blood pressure. They could get some stats. They could look at product that would help them. So it was a great, a great day. And I just want to tell our, Derek, our director and all of his staff, thanks for such a good job on what they do up there and how they promote the fitness center and recreation programs. That's all I have.
Thanks for that report. And now we'll move on to the council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Chris Jansen.
Well, we've heard about parks.
Yes, we have.
The library board is having a special gathering on Saturday morning next week. And we're going to get together for a couple of hours and have a retreat. We're looking at goals and trying to figure out where we stand. It's still a good report for being on the quality library list. I want to make sure we keep up with that.
All right. Thanks for that report. Councilmember Shelton?
Thanks, Mayor. Just sent an email out, give an update on the dispatch and the movement that we have there with possible expansion with one of our neighboring cities. Again, if you have questions on that, let me know. They're negotiating right now and getting down those final numbers. I should have a little bit of thirty days to provide to the council and that will be something that will be voted on by this body as it comes back. And when it comes in, has to be voted on by each individual city. And so we'll probably see that here in the next few months, depending on how attorneys and legal negotiations take place. Mentioned before, wanted to just say thank you again to city staff for the great open house that we had, for the taxation and CRAs. I thought that was great. It was good to see people fill the seats. And sometimes the best conversation is always afterwards as well because me, at least as an elected official, I'm sure others, an opportunity to press the flesh a little bit and get a chance to talk to people that have concerns. And I think every time that we have one of those, I think people walk away better informed and understanding of what we do as a city council and sitting through all these meetings and hours and they're trying to understand from the room and mail. So I think that's great. Also, as part of that, we did one of those open houses for the, when we did Art Di and doing the ninety-eight north project and sent that out to the council. And it was great to see us come back and say thank you, you know, for listening to us. One of the questions that I got that night was, do you even listen during these open houses or is life just already decided? And I, you know, I know Clark was there during those meetings and we changed the whole bike path program and everything down that ninety-eight road and tweaked some things to address members' concerns. I know Mayor, you were involved with that special property there on ninety-eight as well. So hopefully, we can use that as an example going forward of when people are concerned and come together and really listen and come up with something great together. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Barnes?
Councilmember Carroll will address this more, I'm sure. But we had a luncheon today with the Chamber of Commerce and we got to hear from our mayor. We had a really good turnout. We pretty well filled up the, you call that the banquet room at Fox Hall. It was a good turnout, good representation from our businesses as well as both Alpine and Highland had, there are some of their elected officials and some of their business people there and it was very well done. The mayor did our city proud. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was going to mention that we had the State of the City Address today at our Chamber of Commerce luncheon and that was great. The mayor will probably touch on that a little bit more. It was really good, really good to see people there. He gave a great speech. In addition to that, the chamber is also hosting Pancakes and Politics. And that is at the American Fork Hospital, February eighth and February twenty-ninth. So there's two separate ones in the morning, nine to ten-thirty. And those are an opportunity for residents or citizens to talk with any elected official in the state legislature. They come down, they invite them and they just answer questions usually. So it's right during the legislature. look at goals, trying to figure out where we stand. It's still a good report for being on the quality library list. I want to make sure we keep up with that.
All right. Thanks for that report. Councilmember Shelton.
Thanks, Mayor. Just sent an email out, give an update on the dispatch and the movement that we have there with possible expansion with one of our neighboring cities. Again, if you have questions on that, let me know. They're negotiating right now, I'm getting down those final numbers, I should have a little bit than thirty days to provide to the council, and that will be something that will be voted on by this body as it comes back, and when it comes in, has to be voted on by each individual city. And so we'll probably see that here in the next few months, depending on how attorneys and legal negotiations take place. Mentioned before, wanted to just say thank you again to city staff for the great open house that we had, for the taxation and CRAs. I thought that was great, it was good to see people fill the seats. And sometimes the best conversation is always afterwards as well, because me, at least as an elected official, and I'm sure others, an opportunity to press the flesh a little bit and get a chance to talk to people that have concerns. And I think every time that we have one of those, I think people walk away better informed and understanding of what we do as a city council, and sitting through all these meetings and hours, and they're trying to understand from the room they're in. So I think that's great. Also, as part of that, we did one of those open houses for the, when we did Art Di doing the ninety-eight north project, and sent that out to the council. And it was great to see us come back and say thank you, you know, for listening to us. One of the questions that I got that night was, do you even listen during these open houses, or is life just already decided? And I, you know, I know Clark was there during those meetings, and we changed the whole bike path program and everything down that ninety-eight road, and tweaked some things to address members' concerns. I know Mayor, you were involved with that special property there on ninety-eight as well. So hopefully we can use that as an example going forward, and when people are concerned, we can come together and really listen, and come up with something great together. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Barnes?
Councilman Care, councilmember Carol will address this more, I'm sure. But we had a luncheon today with the Chamber of Commerce, and we got to hear from our mayor, and we had a really good turnout, we pretty well filled up the, you call that the banquet room at Fox Hall. It was a good turnout, good representation from our businesses, as well as both Alpine and Highland had, there are some of their elected officials and some of their business people there, and it was very well done. The mayor did our city proud. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was going to mention that we had the state of the city address today at our Chamber of Commerce luncheon, and that was great. The mayor will probably touch on that a little bit more. It was really good, really good to see people there. He gave a great speech. In addition to that, the chamber is also hosting Pancakes and Politics, and that is at the American Fork Hospital, February eighth and February twenty-ninth, so there's two separate ones, in the morning, nine to ten-thirty. And those are an opportunity for residents or citizens to talk with any elected official in the state legislature. They come down, they invite them, and they just answer questions usually. So it's right during the legislative session, they have to sacrifice time to be there, but it's usually a good time to do that, to talk to your legislators. And that's it. Thanks.
Thanks for that report. Councilmember Taylor?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to recap a couple of things, just add my voice to that of Rob's regarding the town hall meetings. I've had great reports back for those, I think we've had a really successful run at those in the last eight months with everything that's been going on with the fiber, to this meeting the other night. There's, there's a tremendous amount of, and I don't think it's just inherent mistrust, but to say our taxes will go up is so easy and automatic. And, and I think efforts like the staff put in with the town hall to educate people, and it's not just educate, you know, it's not just educational to, to the, to the residents, I, I gain a tremendous amount of that, and get clarity on items that I wasn't clear on. And I think it always speaks to transparency, and how important that is. And I, so I applaud the staff and appreciate all the citizens who participated in that as well. I was sorry that I had to leave early, but it was streamed on YouTube, thank you, George, that made that available to us after the fact. So that was wonderful. I also appreciate Lisa Berkland, I've never met her before, but I, I, I am emotionally tied to Art Di, and have been for years, and I have that same reservation regarding parking on that new sod. I know back when I cared about running, I ran the, the half marathon up the canyon, and we parked at the high school, and then we shuttled. And I don't know if that's feasible, I don't know what the, the opportunities for that is, but that, as, as the mayor can tell you from his professional opinion, that first year is so critical to that new sod. I don't know if there's another solution, but it's certainly something to pay attention to, because the last thing I want to do is finally get what I wanted, and then screw it up with a bunch of cars parking on it. So. And then finally, Mayor, just a note out to all those who would be interested in park funds, P-A-R-C funds. Our park committee met, and every year prior to the application process, we, we plan, we go to great, great lengths to get the presentation ready, make it as clear as possible for those who would be interested in applying for those park funds, and, and get that ready. There is a mandatory meeting on January thirtieth at seven PM, will be in the, the administration building, in the conference room there. And as always, we require, unless there's a very extenuating circumstance, and we're given notice on that beforehand, that that is a mandatory meeting. We go over some very critical information, we make the process easier to apply, et cetera, through that. And, and so January thirtieth is the day to mark on your calendar, or to let people know that those, that meeting to be able to be educated and get your application in the process taken care of, it's critical that you are to that meeting. And then just a thanks to the, the park committee. I've worked with a lot of committees in the city for a number of years, and I am forever impressed with the level of commitment and the, the way that, that team works to make this clear and easy and beneficial to us. And so I just wanted to pass on my kudos in that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Just looking up a name that just failed me for a minute. But for the mayor's report, I, I am going to prepare you, that I, I do intend to give the, the state of the city address again today. And I'll, I'll just do it up there to this vast audience, but as much as anything, maybe it's on YouTube, and it will be for the public record. But prior to doing that, I would like to just share with you a couple experiences of the, of the mayor's travels in the last few weeks. The one that really brings to mind is that I was at the Nova graduation with Officer Ochota, Ochoa, at Shelley School the, on Monday, or yesterday, it seemed like a week ago. And I was just very touched by the camaraderie and the relationship of trust that has been built between our officer and this great big group of sixth graders. And the very incredible principles that if these kids will follow, I think will lead them on a path that will not get them into trouble. It teaches principles of staying away from drugs and alcohol and making good decisions. And the tenets of the Nova program, I believe, are a good roadmap, especially for somebody that is in the sixth grade. There was a few kids that read what they called their constitution. And one of them, and I don't doubt him for a minute, he said he's going to write a book because of it. And, but it was just really neat to see that, to see how the city supports these kids. So. And then I would make mention too, as well, as we've talked about these town halls, and the, the feedback that we get from citizens that on the two hundred south, we've had, I think, a public open house on that, and we have been able to move, much like we did on ninety-eight, we've moved that trell across the, the street in a couple places because of the feedback of residents prior to. And I'm sure there's always other good things that we can learn as we come together, and they're very productive. So that being said, I'm going to just stand right there, and I would like to, again, just restate this, I would like the council to hear it, and I apologize for those that already have. And so they'll get a second one. If I might, I might even just explain the setting today. We, it was highly attended with members of the school district, Rob Smith, and some of the leadership of the school. Altebrink president was there, and then mayor of Alpine was there, council members from the other city. To me, that was a big surprise. I didn't know that they would be there, and then a large contingency of our business district that were our members of the chamber. And I would like to, again, this is, this is by way of public record. And so I feel like I would like to openly state in the same manner that I did this morning, that it's common that if I go somewhere like that, I, I say I get flanked by staff. I like to, to bring staff when we meet with our business community, because they have good answers, and they're in the grounds, and they are, they know things that I wouldn't know. But the person that's, that flanks me, that usually stands by my side, and she was there today, but I want to make it a matter of record, is my dear wife. I thank her. And I could not perform the office of, of mayor, or maybe really anything else that matters in life if I didn't have her rock solid by my side. And so I'm looking out of this audience, and I see the people that are here, but I'm seeing two pretty special people right here that came. And I couldn't think of a better audience than if it was just an audience of one. And that is my granddaughter, because she is an American Fork resident, and I can't, and much of what we talk about will be dealt with how we're building this community. So if you don't hear what I say behind me or in front of me, maybe we can look at her, and maybe we can think of her, and she can be the example of what we're trying to do. Over the holidays, I received several cards from friends, family, and loved ones. But this was the first year I also received a New Year's greeting card from a good friend. Maybe they were trying to be a little different, or maybe they just simply missed the window of a Christmas card. Either way, I was struck by the message the card conveyed. In a simple yet powerful statement, the, the card read, "Dear future, we are ready." I was taken by the confidence in the proclamation. The statement, of course, prompted a great deal of self-reflection and left me wondering if I could make such a bold statement about my own personal life. However, when I began to think about this statement and how it applies to American Fork City, I felt more confident in proclaiming, "Dear future, we're ready." Today, I'd like to outline the ways in which we are ready, or getting ready, for the future. Like many of our neighbors, AF is experiencing unprecedented growth. And why wouldn't we want, why wouldn't we want to locate here? We are ideally situated with our accesses to the lake, to the American Fork Canyon, and our proximity to Salt Lake and Provo area. Last year, we issued seven hundred and ninety-five building permits, the most ever issued in a given year. This amounts to one hundred and eighty million dollar investment into our community, which means housing, job growth, and entertainment. It also means greater demands on our staff, including our inspectors. But we are committed to improve and expedite, expedite our permitting processes without compromising building safety. Now, some tends, some tend to blame outsiders for our huge housing demand. But the, but the truth is, most of the people moving in and out of our, our own children and our grandchildren. That tells me two things. One, we are doing something, something right as parents, teachers, leaders, businesses, and neighbors, if our kids want to come back. And secondly, we are doing something right as a community, if American Fork is a desirable location new generations want to move to. Whitney Houston was right when she said, "Children are our future." But before we start patting ourselves on the back for good parenting, we should recognize we still have a lot of work to do. Of course, we can't talk about our youth without mentioning Alpine School District, who plays a pivotal role in shaping our children. Well, there is no substitute for caring, loving, and present parenting in the home. Alpine has done tremendous work in fostering healthy, educated, well-rounded kids. In addition to teaching the core subject, Alpine has taken upon themselves to promote mental health and well-being through programs like Shine Alpine and Aware. We are truly grateful for what they do in readying our youth for the future and participating in making our community thrive. American Fork City and the school district work closely together to discuss shared resources and common goals. I'd like to think doing this has saved taxpayers money. Through our coordination, the city shares pools and field spaces, while the district shares auditoriums and gyms. And through our new Community That Cares program, the city and school district are collaborating like never before. Communities That Care, or CTC, is a national program that uses data and community involvement to target issues specific to our community. Youth who come from towns with CTC programs are thirty-three percent less likely to initiate cigarette use, thirty-two percent less likely to initiate alcohol use, and twenty-five percent less likely to initiate delinquent behavior. The CTC is a co-op between the city, school, businesses, and residents. It is people volunteering time to solve challenges specific to American Fork. I thank everyone who participates in our CTC program, invite others interested to get involved by reaching out to our CTC coordinator. The only way our youth will be ready for the future is if we are willing to teach them, and the only way to teach them is if we are ready ourselves. Probably the best lesson we can learn is how to serve. We have examples in our own community that we should follow. This last year, American Fork recognized Chuck Goodwin and Brian, better known as Bucket Parker, who have given over thirty years coaching youth baseball. Then there's Larry and Veda Hunter, who helped those displaced by the Paradise Fires in California by donating, donating their fifth-wheeled trailer and gathering supplies to fill other, five other trailers, all of which were sent to California. I have seen many great acts of kindness during my time as mayor, but I also know that countless other acts of kindness I haven't seen take place by the good men and women that live around us. People choose to serve one another, will do more to prepare us for the future than any program, utility, or amenity can do. As I reflect on how we can ready our community for the future, I was reminded of something I mentioned when I started my term as mayor, which I thought was, is worth revisiting. It's that we live in a great community with great people, but it's my optic to think that the only way to maintain our quality of life is to not grow. Closing the doors to growth will cut off from the better things to come. We need to think higher than that, and realize if we work together to be strong, united, and in an evolved community, then we will maintain our identity as growth occurs. In fact, our identity will be transmitted to all who come here. Growth is inevitable, change is inevitable. It's up to us to determine how best to guide that growth and change so it benefits the community, preserves our character, maintains our quality of life, while still giving future generations opportunities to live, work, and play around us. Another way we are getting ready for the future is by building a team of great city employees that have a forward-thinking attitude. As a municipality, we differ in ways from regular businesses or corporations. Cities can measure success by profit margin, or can't measure success by profit margins or by counting the numbers of goods sold. But one measuring stick we do have in common with businesses is that customer service. For cities and businesses alike, we are only as good as our employees. I want to tell you, we have great employees. They work, they serve, they volunteer, and they go the extra mile. By no means are we perfect, but for a group of people who work inside a community fishbowl, to be judged of everyone, they are incredible. We are always striving to be better, which is why I think as an organization, our attitude is what it should be, willing to accomplish even more, and always looking for ways to improve. In that sense, our employees are ready for the future. We have a strong, independent, free-thinking community, but we also, we are also respectful, thoughtful, and understanding. From this tapestry, we have pulled some of the very best to be the city council members. I am honored to work alongside councilmembers Chris Jansen, Shelton, Barnes, Carol, and Taylor. They are willing to tackle complex issues, not because it's easy, but because it's right. They work well together. You have to be glutton for punishment to be, to be on the city council. No matter what decision you make, there will always be a group that disagrees, and they will tell you that. But I promise you, in spite of this, our city council is always serving the best interest of the community. Whether city, whether council members, business owners, city staff, volunteers, or residents, we are pulling the same wagon forward. So let's work together, share the, the load, and make sure we are pulling, pulling it towards the future. In addition to readying our people for the future, we of course need to ready our physical space. Last year, you approved the construction of a new fire station in the northeast part of town, and property in the south part of town for future station. Thank you so much for approving this critical need. We are currently securing the location for the station, and hope to send a request for qualification in the next month for design work. Building the second fire station cannot come soon enough. The transport numbers have come in for two thousand and eighteen, and we have retained our title as the busiest fire station in Utah County. Last year, we handled three thousand nine hundred and ten calls, which is seven hundred and twenty-eight more than two thousand and eighteen. Not to be outdone, our police have also done more with less as development has stretched them. While they, while they too, while they too need to grow, I am always amazed at how effective our police department is at leveraging grants and other resources to get work done. We are excited for some key transportation projects that will prepare us for the future. In order to reduce congestion, we need more and better connectivity. Connectivity like what Canal Boulevard will provide. By serving as a major east-west connector through Northern American Fork, the Canal Boulevard will reduce the traffic that comes down State Street. Another key east-west link will be connecting seven hundred north between one hundred and two hundred east. Thanks to MAG funds, we can begin design work for this crucial road, which will have a signal at one hundred east, and, and a grade down a signal at 100 East and a grade downhill that will be less steep than 600 North by the Star Mill. Additionally, we are working with UDOT on the Vineyard Connector, for which construction has already begun in Vineyard City. That road will be vital to supplement the congestion I-15 and State Street in our town. While we'll keep building roads and improving connectivity, we also need to be looking at public transit as an acceptable alternative. This is another element we are planning for, knowing it will be essential infrastructure in the near future. While it's wonderful to have I-15 in our community, as many of you have observed, it acts as a literal barrier between development on the north and south side. Currently, the frontrunner station is like an island from which you can see but not reach the mainland that is our meadow shopping center. With the TOD and other growing growth coming, we know the south side will eventually be its own mainland, which makes connecting our two sides all more important. For this reason, we are excited to have MAG fund a study for a public transit circulator that will carry people between the frontrunner station and our business district in town. This study will be the first official document stating the need for better mass transit in our community and the first step in working with UDOT and UTA to make a transit circulator and even another overpass a reality. With park funds, we have made great strides in readying our recreation and cultural spaces for the future. To date, park funds have provided $4 million in arts and recreational opportunities. With this money, the community has enjoyed more plays and playgrounds. We have enjoyed performances by the Alpine Community Theater, the Timpanogus Arts Foundation, and Fork Fest by the Harrington Center for the Arts. We have completed playgrounds, parking lots, and pavilions. Most notably, we will finish an art di this spring thanks to park funds. We are incredibly grateful to our community for approving the park fund, which has been a tremendous boon to the American Fork's quality of life. If we want to be ready for the future, we'll need businesses that provide important services and invest in community members. We have wonderful businesses within our city and are continually adding more every year. Some notable businesses to announce is the Amazon Delivery Center. Bilt Bar, which will be located in the former Twin Labs building on Utah Valley Drive. And I am pleased to announce that Woodbury has begun construction of a new Class A office tower that will be five stories, 155,000 square feet, and located near 500 East. American Fork is the only city in northern Utah County to have a qualified opportunity zone, and this tower is the first office space to take advantage of that zone. They will only add to the terrific businesses we already enjoy. I thank our businesses that locate here, serve our residents, and invest in our community. Your presence improves us all and helps provide the ever-changing needs of our growing and dynamic city. The last way we are readying ourselves for the future is our infrastructure. Managing what goes under the ground is some of the most important aspects of what a city does, yet it is one of the least sexiest ways to spend a dollar. What I mean, it is important but often not seen. Nonetheless, we are committed to improve and updating our critical infrastructure. We are working to update our road plan to show residents what's been accomplished and what it will take to improve the remaining network. We have some major water lines that need to be installed or updated that we are planning for, and as development occurs, we make sure they cover their own water by adding water rights to our city portfolio. We have also had tremendous success with our sewer slip lining program, such that we have been able to hold off increasing TSSD rates for our residents. We have made great strides in our infrastructure and our planning for the future. I'd like to spend a couple minutes talking about fiber in our community and why this is an issue worthy of our attention. For one, fiber really is the new utility. Connectivity is the first thing developers ask about when deciding where to build, even before impact fees, permit costs, and parking requirements. In addition to general demand for internet, fiber will be essential for future needs like 5G and can be used for other services like education, healthcare, telecommuting, and emergency responses. Additionally, AF has a number of assets that give us an advantage when it comes to providing fiber. We already have a Network Operations Center, or what we call the NOC, and we already own fiber lines. We are the only city that owns fiber along the I-15 corridor. Rather than let these assets go unused or sell them off for a fraction of their value, we are investigating a plan that could utilize them and benefit the city, the residents, and even other communities. While demand for internet is virtually everywhere in AF, supply is not. Yes, there are already internet service providers and companies that provide fiber. A few cities have used their models, and that is a possibility we are exploring as well. But we want to make sure we are not signing a deal that leaves the company with all the benefits and our residents and businesses with all the risks. Our community deserves all the essential infrastructure expected in this day and age, and it is our job to work out the most responsible way to provide it. The city has a big undertaking in preparing for the future. In addition to preparing our residents, we need to look at what goes over and under the ground and ensure that it's ready for the future as well. And while we may not have everything fixed, we have a plan and we are committed to accomplish them. Our council and staff are willing to forego the short-term game for the long-term solution. In closing, if you find yourself hopping on the freeway at 1600 North in Orem or near the roller mills in Lehigh, if you look, you'll be able to see our large American flag at the cemetery. I look for it often when I'm approaching American Fork. Like a pin dropped on the county landscape map, our great flag is an indication of where home is. There is something unifying about being able to see the flag from anywhere. I'd like to think the flag has been a unifying symbol for our community for some time. Before we were American Fork, we were an American fort. In my mind, I, that fort, had an American flag also, with far fewer stars, hoisted up on its wall, a beacon of home and safety for the pioneers. At the bottom of our flag today, we have the Statue of Responsibility as designed by Gary Lee Price, an object memorializing our duty to share the American values of hard work, equality, independence, and justice with others and carry them into the future. Gandhi said, "The future depends on what you do today," close quote. Whether it's our people, our places, or our infrastructure, we are preparing for what lies ahead by making good decisions now. We are striving to live up by the values we want to teach our children, so when they grow up, they can carry the city forward. If we can create a unified vision for our great city, we can say with confidence, "Dear future, we are ready." Thank you.
We'll now move on to the Common Consent Agenda. I would like to review item number five. We want to review that and make sure that everything... We know you're sworn in, but we felt like there might be a clerical error. Let's just put it that way. So we'll bring that back in our next council. So I would entertain a motion for the Common Consent Agenda minus item number five. I have a motion by Councilmember Shelton. Second by Councilmember Barnes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Christy Anson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Item number two is ratification of city payments from the dates of December 3, 2019 to January 7, 2020. And I did not see any purchase requests over $25,000. So we have a motion to pay the city bills.
So moved, Mayor.
A motion by Councilmember Taylor?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Christy Anson. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Christy Anson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Item number two is reviewing action on an alcohol beverage license for Tamashi Ramen and Sushi Bar located at 466 North, 900 West, Suite Number C.
Mayor, I'd move to approve an alcoholic beverage license for Tamashi Ramen and Sushi Bar located at 466 North, 900 West, Suite C.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Taylor?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shelton. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Christy Anson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Item number three is reviewing action on a memorandum of understanding with Providence Hall Charter School for Rotary Park backstop improvements. If there's any questions for this, I'm going to ask Derek to come forward. I think the packet had some good information in it. Maybe just give us a quick overview, Derek.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for considering this in the timely manner that it's been considered. This is Rotary Park down the south side of town. It's a field that we've had for many years in our city. The Parks Department has... There's a backstop there. They've nursed along, and they've tried a lot of different options to keep foul balls from going into the street and to the neighboring homes. The homeowners have been patient with us. This past winter, the backstop failed during a windstorm and snowstorm and basically tore down the improvements that had been put on there, and so it needs to be replaced. So that's the need to have that backstop replaced. At the same time, we've been working with Providence Hall Charter School. They've been looking for a home for their baseball team, and they've played their last season, and they're in a position where they have some funding that they can contribute to make improvements to the facility. And so we approached them with this specific need, and it's something that they were willing to partner with us on and contribute to that project. So this would be in agreement with them to put in $60,000 to go towards replacing that backstop. And it would be a much larger-scale backstop, higher, a lot more spectator-friendly, a much more modern backstop.
Is it like the chain link? Or is it going to be kind of that flexible netting that we had before?
It'll be the black netting, so it'll be netting with big poles.
It's nearly identical to what's at the high school now.
Yep. Yep. AF High School and Skyridge High School both put the same one in.
So we don't think it's going to fail next windstorm that comes up? It's going to be able to...
This one will stay up, yep. It won't have an overhang. It goes straight up.
Straight up.
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome for the spectators and everything. It's just Mrs. Phelps will be applauding every game that's there, so.
I do have a couple of comments. I did notice in here it said something about they would be able to... Both the city and Providence Hall would be able to shut down the park to prepare for games or practices. And it doesn't have a timeframe of how long that would be necessarily, and I'm okay keeping it open-ended, but maybe in the actual contract, we need something that helps us mitigate if there's a problem.
Okay.
You know, like if the city... I just imagine if they shut it down for half the day and residents can't use the park and we would request that they did, maybe there was something written that would allow us to do that. I don't know.
Okay. Yep. We can do that. We'll always have scheduling priority over the facility. The intent of that one is just like on game day, if they want to do a little extra preparation work, they could.
Absolutely. I totally understand why it would need to be in there.
So just some more details on maybe what that entails.
Probably for the most part, about an hour and a half or 90 minutes before game time.
That's what I would hope. Right. But if that was stretched for longer, because it says in here that they would also want to use the park maybe for some other events or things that they're doing. And I just want to make sure that that park is maintained to have some use for our residents as well, and just to make sure that I'm protecting that at all times. I think this is a good compromise for us, that we are allowing the use of the park and we're getting something from it too, but to make sure that we're protecting the use of the park. That park is so great, and it's in an area where they don't have other parks, so I want them to be able to use it.
Yeah. Okay.
That was my question also. You noted in the information here how heavily used it is, and I just wanted to make sure it's not going to be... It's going to be acceptable to both parties.
Yeah, it will be. The time of year that they need it is actually a good... They're kind of earlier in the season, so it'll be a good balance of being scheduled and then being available.
I don't go by that a lot, but I have noticed when I go by there, that park does not seem... The ballpark portion of that... Whoa, that thing's bad. The ballpark portion of it does not seem to be used that much when I've gone by there. The rest of the park where the pavilions are, which are absolutely wonderful now, we used it last year for a family reunion and stuff. That other south part of the park always seems to have people there, but the baseball diamond itself, in my very limited experience, does not seem to be used that much. And so personally, I think it's a wonderful deal, and I'm glad you've been able to bring it this far along, and I think it will be a good addition and help for the city to have that park used, to have them there, and obviously to fix that backstop and bring the neighbors some peace and quiet in the middle of the night, so the balls don't go through their windows and stuff. So I'm all for it.
There's so much, so much good that's going to come of this from repairing the sidewalk, if you've ever played baseball down there. The back porch on that is just very deep, and even a person like myself could probably make it home from second on a passed ball. And we're going to make that more regulation now and scoot that in and make that good. And then also, along with Derek and our park staff, I just... You've got to give a shout out to Randy Spafford, who has worked so close with Providence Hall and has just been... He's been a champion of this park. We actually, you know, semi-paid tribute to he and Craig Roberts earlier this... Well, excuse me, last year, for all the work that's been done down there. But Randy has been working closely with Providence Hall and just continues to watchdog this park, and he and Derek have done a fantastic job with this.
Second, I think the... Who was the Roberts gentleman? I forget his first name.
Craig.
Craig. I mean, this park wouldn't be what it is without his attention to detail, and his compensation is very, very, very minimal. And so I think, if I remember right, isn't that the same dirt that's on Yankee Stadium?
There may be a scoop or two mixed in there.
Just what came back on someone's shoes.
Yeah, but similar makeup. Yeah, clay and sand.
Supplier, so.
Same clay, sand.
Kind of interesting. But I think it's great. I think that just overall, the conversation we had today about recreation, I love these types of contracts because it puts down exactly what both parties are going to have, but it doesn't provide for any muddy water down the road. So as we look to do that with other programming, I think that's great that's out there, whether it be North Utah County Soccer or AF Youth Baseball. I just think it's great for us to have those. And happens with the school district, they require forever use of their facility. There's contracts, insurance coverages, all that good stuff. So anything we can do to keep working that direction, I think is great. Then I also think, you know, this is... This item, but it will be coming up, is the matching park funds. I love the idea of matching money. It just helps stretch our dollars so much further. So as we continue to look to partner up with organizations like this, it helps our money go that much more farther, so.
And the thing to note is, you know, they've gone two-thirds of the way there.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is more than matching.
Mayor, I'd move to approve that you sign the memorandum of understanding with Providence Hall Charter School.
I have a motion by Councilmember Taylor and a second by Councilmember Barnes. Any discussion on the motion?
The only last thing is, this is just an understanding, so it's not the contract, but I didn't see any termination provision in there, so I'm guessing that might be in the contract. contract that's forthcoming.
It's a twelve-year term. Um, there's not a specific termination clause in here. Uh, but it does actually indicate that we have the right, sorry. It does indicate that after five years, then there's buyout provisions if we were to terminate prior to those twelve years being up.
Sure.
Um, but, but yes, there's some additional terms and, and clarifications as far as timing and whatnot of, you know, when the park could be closed or, that'll all be worked out. This really is to be able to move forward and get things going and have everybody on the same page.
Why twelve years? How'd they come up with twelve years?
Um.
It's what?
It's an even dozen.
It's a Steven dozen.
We started up around twenty and just kinda worked to somewhere that gave them enough stability, but didn't lock us in for longer than we felt like we needed to.
All right, I have a motion and a second, and I'll call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Christy Anson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Thanks, Derek. Item number four is a review in action on an ordinance providing for the distribution of additional funds from the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen park tax revenue. This has, uh, maybe I'll let, me, Councilmember Taylor, do you wanna just maybe share with us that, that board meeting?
Yeah, so we met with, uh, our sales tax is, the sales tax is beyond our projections. And so there are excess funds in the P A R C, the park, um, funds. And so, uh, we, this was presented to the board and they unanimously, uh, thought that it should be recommended to the city council to go ahead and use those, some of those additional funds for this particular, uh, project. They thought it was very worthwhile. They were supportive of that. So.
Okay.
Mayor, with that, I move to approve the ordinance providing the distribution of additional funds from the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, P A R C tax revenues.
Okay, have a motion by Councilmember Taylor.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shelton. Any discussion on the motion?
Just one little nitpicky, and it's really nitpicky observation. On the first item, it says the remaining balance is thirty thousand four hundred. And there's thirty thousand coming out of the P A R C fund. We're short, well, we just approved, we're talking about approving thirty thousand. It's just the little four hundred dollar difference. That'll drive somebody crazy trying to find it.
You know, we have, we have a five percent contingency in that. We can either amend the motion or just, just cover it in the contingency.
Just cover the contingency.
All right. Okay. We'll just keep it as, as such. Councilmember Barnes, if you're okay with that. Okay. All right. Have a motion and a second, and I'll call for a vote call vote. Councilmember Christy Anson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Item number five is a review, a review in action on an ordinance adopting the Patriot Station Community Reinvestment Project Area Plan. Think this is just, uh, somewhat of a carryover from our RDA meeting. This, it just has to be ratified in a, by the city council. Just to, we act with different hats on right now, and I can keep you straight as council members. But nothing really substantially has changed.
Move to adopt the ordinance adopting Patriot Station Community Reinvestment Project Area.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion by Councilmember Shelton and second by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Christy Anson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
All right, item number six is a review in action on a resolution, amending resolution tw- two zero one three dash zero five dash zero seven R regarding utility waivers for active duty military personnel establishing a credit for American Fork City full-time frontline public safety personnel and establishing an effective date. Is there any questions, uh, that we could have? I think David is the best one to, to be able to address this. This is something we've been talking about for a little while. We felt like that today would be a good day to bring it up. Any questions to its purpose?
I think I can see the, the purpose behind it. My question is the path to get there. Um, I think, was Clark ran on this once, talking about if you were king for the day, you'd make everyone that worked for the city live inside the city. And there's benefits to having employees living within the city. They're using the same services and things of that nature. Um, here it clearly lists the benefits of having someone that's more localized, that could be able to respond. But I wonder if that goes beyond just our public safety officers. Wouldn't that be true for our water crew when there's a big water main break or something of that nature? Is there benefit to, others that sit on the, um, oh, now my mind's dropping late at night here. The, uh, emergency response, the E O C. And each staff member has different responsibilities associated with that. So I think there's more benefit than just the fire and police. I kinda feel like, um, when I first came on the council, the fire and police were kind of, uh, given a different benefit package with the cafeteria plan. I never liked them being left out of that. Now I kinda feel like maybe we're leaving out the rest of the employees with the same benefit. And so I'm wondering if the best thing to do versus the utility credit, I'm not a big fan of that. I feel like that monkey's too much with the enterprise fund and things of that nature. If we just couldn't do an incentive pay and put it in their paychecks for that amount.
If you don't mind, if I can address maybe a couple of those ends. Number one, one of the reasons why we look at the full-time frontline public safety officers is because a lot of times there's, um, uh, an expectation that their response time is within a certain limit. For fire, we try to hit four to six minute response time. That's typically not the case with, um, even, even public works. We, of course, we wanna get there as fast as possible with a water line break. If we don't get there within four to six minutes, you know, maybe a little more damage to that road can happen. But there's not a, a standard to get there within four to six minutes. Um, and, and normally they're not dealing with, uh, you know, a house fire doubles every minute. You know, ten percent of your hard guys every sixty seconds. So every, every minute is critical. These, these frontline public safety officers are right there. And so response time is probably more critical uh, for those, those public safety officers. Um, so that's, that's why we were.
Going to limit that to, uh, the public safety officers. Um, as far as, um, you know, giving a, some kind of a, an increase in their paycheck, we, that, that's another option to do. Although that will have tax implications to, to anyone who qualifies for it. So that would be, uh, shown as income. And then they would have to pay, pay some extra income tax on that.
Qualify as an income tax issue for them?
No.
Not under the fringe benefit provisions?
I don't, I'll let you, I'll let you, thanks for that.
I'm not going to pretend as if I'm a tax expert today.
I would, I think there's a huge list in there of fringe benefits that you have to be careful of. Um, that, I'm not a CPA by stretch of imagination, but I think that's something we would wanna look into, uh, regardless. But as I look at it, even if they gotta pay the, the tax on it, and the tax, I don't know what everyone's income tax bracket is at. But I would assume a typical public safety official isn't going to be in a high tax bracket. We're not paying them as well as we probably would like to and what we think that some of them probably deserve. Um, so you're probably gonna be looking at a twelve to fifteen percent tax bracket that they're going to be at. The thing that I have an issue with on the utility fee is we're going out there and we're raising the utility fees for our residents. And then we're coming back and saying, hey, certain employees, we're gonna cut out that. And that's coming right out of the enterprise fund. With coming out of the general fund, that allows us, I think, a little more flexibility on that side. And I'd love just not to have to touch that utility fee, um, because then when, when does it stop? Right? Uh, and how far does that go? And I really would like it to extend to all employees. I think that's a great benefit.
I do have a thought on the income tax or the income side. And that is, how do you give? I mean, it's easy to give this only to AF residents if it's a utility fee. But if it's, you're just giving more money to people that live in American Fork City, that's a little odd. So if you're trying to incentivize people to live in American Fork City, you can't just, okay, only the people who live in AF are gonna get. How much is that per sixty times twelve? Seven twenty per year or more. But everybody else is not. It doesn't really, it's a little odd, but giving a utility credit is not.
I don't think it's that odd. Um, there's different benefits on different committees that I serve on that's, uh, based incentive way that, that way. That you incentivize people with, with paychecks.
Based on where they live?
Yeah, exactly. I think, Clark, didn't you tell me some cities, I may have missed, I mean, this is going back, uh, an election cycle. This is four years ago. But isn't some cities actually require their employees?
They were trying, was it, I, I think someone brought it up in Lehigh, that, that the management portion of, of the city staff were required to live in the city. That was a proposal. I don't know whether that took heat and never, ever passed.
Gotcha.
But I'm not sure. And I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I know about that. I mean, I, it was a proposal at one time. And they did not require that. Sometimes maybe city administrators were required to live in the city at times. Um, but that's so that they can be close enough also to respond to events within the city.
At the end of the day, you're giving them a financial benefit one way or the other. For me, it's more coming out of the general fund and the enterprise fund and the perception of it as well. Um, we've been very, very limited in there in the past as to those benefits being circuit breaker provisions as well as the, the military service. So I, I almost wanna leave that intact as it is and just say, hey, you wanna locate within the, the city. And as a city employee, that means you're gonna be here to use our parks, to use our, everything that we have and to enhance our customer service that the mayor talked about that really sets us apart as a city. That's a great incentive for us to be able to pay you a little extra for that.
And then do we have to pay more pension if we pay somebody?
Yes, you do, because it's based on.
I, I think, I think going through the utility, doing it as a utility across the, right, I think it's, uh, I, I think, again, their jobs are similar in nature as far as protecting life and property. And it, and it meshes well. And I think it's easier, it's easy to administer, uh, and, and through the utility fund. And I, and I feel like it's the best channel. It's, it's almost a way of even having a feeling of appreciation even. I, I think there's, there's more to it than just the money. And so, um, of course, I don't vote, but I would say that if, having vetted this through, I think the utility option is the better option.
And it does a direct impact on our enterprise fund. It restricts the dollars that we have the most restrictions on. Um, just from a budget standpoint. Oh, it's only eighteen thousand, I think I saw in the budget note. But we're looking to possibly triple our fire protection in the next ten to twenty years. Um, with what we have down, I don't know what that would do for our police. And quite frankly, I think it's just fair to be able to say, hey, a lot of these same things that go by, yes, maybe fire is a little bit more important than a home being flooded. I mean, go talk to those four or five homeowners that had their home flooded and how important that would have been to be in a four to six response time for us to be able to have. Um, I think it would just make sense to go across the board for the whole city, but.
I just, I think, kinda like to echo what the mayor said. I think most of the points he said, um, I totally agree with. Um, the thing I'm thinking of is we as a general term call these our first responders. And that's a separation to me. Because they literally are putting their lives on the line every time they go out. You see it on the news if you watch it. Um, highway patrolman was hit on the freeway the other night. His car was wiped out. I think he escaped. But a couple of them have been in, uh, the hospital this year, uh, as they've been working on accidents and things on the side of the road. And of course, the police are always putting their lives on the line. I'm not too caught up in the funds, because I don't understand them as well as you do. And I appreciate that you do understand them better than I do. Um, but I just like the simplicity of sixty bucks a month, check it off and it's done. It's not a lot of bookkeeping or anything else. So that's kinda where I'm coming from. Again, I, I think maybe if I could better explain the, the idea of, of a feeling that this, the community is supporting you is that each, we, each, uh, month as you open your utility bill, you're going to see that notice, that difference. You're going to notice it. It could get lost in a pay increase of a certain amount. To where I see a utility bill, um, that is reduced and it was half of what it was or a portion of it, the sixty dollar portion. I think there's a, there's a sense of appreciation that's associated with that as well.
I think that, uh, I don't know, I've talked to a lot of people. They end up just telling me that their spouse ends up paying the utility bill and they usually don't even look at it. I think the end result is whether it's on your pay stub that you see every two weeks or it's in your other, I don't think there's any more financial administration that's required. I actually think there's probably more to go through the utility fees to be able to make sure they're on the, onboard where all compensation is being directed through your payroll department. But I don't know, I, those are the two big things for me is, is one, is this good enough for our first responders to expand out to our whole city staff?
I think it's a good start. I think that it's a question to be asked. Um, I would say. Yeah, and I, and I would say this too, that if it's the spouse that's opening the bill, maybe, maybe it's better for her to receive that appreciation or that feel too. I mean, it's, it's.
It, it could be. I just, I don't, I'm not sure. I think that whether it's written somewhere, they're gonna see it, right?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I also think the psychology, just the pure psychology, the whole thing of showing the appreciation is, and I, this is just totally a wag. There's no question about it. I think the psychology of the benefit of this to them is well worth the money, um, that it's gonna cost us. And it may encourage somebody to move into our town and save us all that money as, especially if it's a police officer, as they drive their car back and forth to work. I've got a police officer in my neighborhood and he's got a pretty nice truck that he drives and it says Harriman City all over the side of it. By the way, chief, I've already started to work on getting him over to American Fork. Um, but, uh, you know, I look at that and I think that's good for Harriman to pay for that, not us.
I, I might be totally wrong, but I, seems to me that if you pay a dollar into their income tax, I mean, sorry, I don't keep, I don't know why I keep seeing income tax, but the income, they, you have to pay an employee tax and you have to pay pension. And then they have to pay taxes on that. So.
Plus social security.
Plus, yeah, and so.
Figure that out on seven hundred and twenty dollars. I'm, we're talking pennies on, on the grand scheme of the budget.
Built in, all I'm saying is you're getting less than if we're just giving you this.
All right, council, I'm, I'm open to a motion or some kind of a direction based upon that. Find the motion. Go ahead if you got it, Councilmember.
I'll move to approve a resolution, amending resolution twenty thirteen dash zero five dash zero seven R regarding utility waivers for active duty military personnel establishing a credit for American Fork City full-time frontline public safety personnel and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll and a second by Councilmember Barnes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing that I'll call for a vote. Councilmember Christy Anson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
I'm gonna vote no, but just a quick explanation. It's not because I don't feel that our public safety deserves it. I just really feel like we need to treat like I mentioned before, and you guys saw before, that all of our employees with that same respect. And I don't have a hard time with that. So that's why I'm voting no.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay. Item number seven, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilmember Taylor. Second by Councilmember Barnes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned. Council, I'm sorry for keeping you a little later tonight.